We call the order of the March 8th Planning Commission Public Hearing. My name is George Alcarez. I'm the Chairman of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. Before we get started, I ask that we stand and Commissioner Costin lead us into prayer and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Horsley.
Good morning, God our Father. We thank you for this glorious day which you have bestowed upon us. We pray to your God as we enter this meeting, God, that you would grant us of your wisdom and your strength. You might be better servants to the citizens of Virginia Beach. We ask that you would bless this proceedings and let all outcomes be positive. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Be seated. Now, at this time, we usually have one of our Commissioners introduce our staff and our Commissioners, but I'd like to just start at the end and we'll go right down the list and we'll end up at Ms. Caitlin over there to see if she can introduce her staff.
Okay. I'm Kaye Elsa, and I'm the Deputy City Attorney for Land Use and I represent the Planning Commission.
On the bottom.
Bottom.
Thank you. My name is Brian Plumlee and I'm clearly a brand-new member of the Planning Commission and I look forward to working with everyone. I'm a local attorney, have been working in Virginia Beach for over 20 years. Previously served on the Virginia Beach Wetlands Board, so I sort of know where things are and I hope to be of some assistance.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Michael Clemmons. I'm a professor at Old Dominion University. This is about my sixth month on the Planning Commission. I represent District 2.
My name is Don Horsley. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Planning Commission and I'm at large representative. I'm a farmer in Virginia Beach.
Again, my name is George Alcarez. I'm in District 5. I'm a contractor and this is going in my fifth year on Planning Commission.
My name is Holly Quayor. I represent District 8. I grew up in District 8 and currently live there now with my family and I was just reappointed to start a full four-year term starting in March.
My name is John Costin. I'm a retired Virginia Beach Fire Captain and I represent District 9.
I'm William Parks, Representative District 10. I'm an architect here in Virginia Beach and I'm also one of the new members.
I'm Caitlin Alcock, Interim Planning Administrator for the Planning Department. And to my left clerking today, we have Pam Stanloop and Madison Eichels. We have our Interim Planning Director, Kathy Warren, Interim Deputy Planning Director, Carrie Bookhope, and our Zoning Administrator, Hannah Sabal. With our Planning Administration Team, we have Michelle Coleman, Michaela McKenney, and Elizabeth Noack. With our Zoning Team, we have our Deputy Zoning Administrator, Brandon Hackney, and Garrick Hannigan. And then with our IT Team, we have Johnny Horn and Alyssa Huertas, as well as Emily Archer with our Economic Development Office.
All right, thank you. Mr. Horsley has asked for a few minutes to say something.
At this time, I'd like to just let people know that we are very remiss in the passing of one of our former Planning Commissioners and former Chairman of the Planning Commission, Mr. Tom Betts, a week or so ago. Tom was a very, very good Planning Commissioner and very good citizen of Virginia Beach and very good close friend of most of us who remember him being on Planning Commission for many years. So at this time, I'd just like to ask for just a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horsley. Mr. Plumlee, Mr. Parks, welcome aboard. The next, we will ask the clerk to describe the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the Commission normally conducts its meetings. It's equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the Commission with respect and civility. We request that cell phones remain silent during the meeting. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. Following is the Order of Business for this hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The Chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Second Order of Business is the consideration of the Consent Agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The Commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, speakers will be called next. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. If a speaker does not respond or a technical issue occurs which renders a comment unintelligible, we will move on to the next speaker or the next Order of Business. Please note that the actions taken by the Commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the City Council. The Commission thanks you for your attendance and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we start, for the Commissioners, make sure if you do make a motion, make sure you push the motion on your computer in front of you and also if you second it, please second it so that we can get the vote in process. Thank you. The next Order of Business, I'm just going to ask just for clarity, is there any withdrawals? There are none? Any deferrals? There are none. So at this time, the next Order of Business is the Consent Agenda, which I'm going to pass over to the Vice Chair, Horsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our Consent Agenda, the City of Virginia Beach is an ordinance to amend Section 102 of the City's zoning ordinance pertaining to the use of civil penalties. We ask our staff, Ms. Hannah, to speak.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This amendment proposes to amend Section 104 of the City's zoning ordinance, which prescribes how violations of penalties of the ordinance are assessed. Section 104B lists specific sections of the ordinance for which a penalty can be assessed, specifically those sections relating to signage and short-term rentals. Through the enforcement of short-term rental, staff identified changes to that section that would streamline the process by clarifying the sections that could be assessed as a civil penalty. The proposed amendment has the following updates. Language added to include any section that applies to the use of the property as a short-term rental as a civil penalty, and then it removes Section 1903, which was a typographical error in the originally adopted ordinance. If approved, this Section 104B would continue to allow staff to enforce the short-term rental ordinance as civil penalties.
Thank you. The next item on our Consent Agenda is Item Number 3, Born Primitive LLC, Modern Salvage Investments LLC. On the Consent Agenda, Mr. Bradon.
Thank you, Commissioner Horsley. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Eddie Bradon, Virginia Beach Attorney representing the applicant. Welcome, Mr. Parks and Mr. Plumlee. We appreciate being on the Consent Agenda and appreciate all of Marshall's work in keeping us in line to get here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Plumlee, would you read?
I was remiss in not telling you that I'm representing District 6 and this is in my district. The applicant seeks to amend proffers associated with conditional rezoning approved by the city in 2004. It's now proposing to develop the site with one building consisting of 34,000 approximately square-foot warehouse with 7,000 of office space. There's been no objection from the communities in the immediate surrounding area and it's received staff a recommendation for approval. The proposed hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Plumlee. All right, the next item is Item Number 4, Chemist Village 2 LLC, modification of conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Members of the Commission, for the record, my name is Rob Beeman, local land use attorney with the Troutman Pepper Law Firm here today on behalf of the applicant. We have had a chance to read the conditions, they're acceptable, and we appreciate being on the Consent Agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beeman. And I'll read the verbatim on this one. In the staff's opinion, that the modification of conditions to multifamily conditional use is acceptable. The plan recommends residential uses. We just passed last month a change in the zoning of density and the council passed it last night and it similarly applies to this application. It'll complete the development in the chemistral area, historic area, and it'll all look like the same people did the same work and I think it's very well done. We put it on our Consent Agenda. The next item on the Consent Agenda is Item Number 5, B&amp;B Associates of Virginia, Inc., Indian River Apartments LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. For the record, my name is Lindsay Carney Smith with the Carney Patterson Mead Law Firm in Newport News here on behalf of the applicant. We've had the opportunity to review the conditions and they're acceptable and we thank you and Michaela for her work.
Thank you. We've asked Ms. Quayor to read this one.
Thank you. This is a request to expand a non-conforming use to add an additional building to the Indian River Apartments and Townhouse Complex. The new building will be used as a leasing office and amenity space for the complex. The amenities include that are proposed, an outdoor patio and fitness facility. The Commission was invited to visit the site last week and given that there is staff approval and Commission approval and no objections, we therefore put this on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. The next item is Item Number 6, David and Kirsten Meyer. Probably butchered that, but anyway. Mr. Bradon.
Again, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Eddie Bradon, Virginia Beach Attorney representing the Kirsten Meyers. This is typical street closure, alley closure in Croatan. The four conditions as recommended by staff are acceptable to the Kirsten Meyers and appreciate being on the Consent Agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradon. Next item is Item Number... I gotta read it. Oh, that's right, Mr. Alcarez is gonna read that one.
That's right. This is for the Kirsten Meyers, asking for a street closure for a portion of an unimproved alley adjacent to 650 South Atlantic Avenue, Lot 22, and Block 20 of Croatan Beach. And we put this on the Consent Agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item, number 7, is the application of Mr. Woo Vu, applicant, Davis Field Properties, LLC, conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor.
This item is in my district, Brian Plumlee.
Is the applicant here? Representative for the applicant? Okay. Well, we'll have Mr. Plumlee to read this.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a tattoo parlor specifically for the application of permanent makeup. Staff has indicated in its report it's acceptable, given that the use is compatible with other existing commercial businesses. There are no identified secondary effects and the conditions, on my understanding, were agreed to and there's been no opposition, therefore we place it on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Plumlee. Item Number 8 is the next item. Elizabeth Darling, the applicant, for conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor.
Hi, I was here this morning and I know that it was moved to consent, so I appreciate that. I was working with Michaela, but I'm not really sure what else to say. So if you have questions, I can answer them.
Let's see, their conditions, are they acceptable, the conditions? They are acceptable? Thank you.
Thank you.
We've asked Mr. Costin if he would read this.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a tattoo parlor for traditional tattooing within an existing unit at the Malice Center Shopping Center. The shopping center is located along Laskin Road on Property Zone B2, Community Business District. The staff has recommended approval and the Commission has concurred and therefore we place this item on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Costin. Next item is Number 9, Ji Young Lynn Haven Fund LLC, conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor.
Thank you. My name is Ji Young Son and I'm requesting for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor and I appreciate your consent.
Are the conditions acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you. We've asked Ms. Quayor to read this one.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a tattoo parlor specifically for the application of permanent makeup, known as microblading. Within an existing beauty salon at the Salem Cross Shopping Center, the shopping center is located along Lynn Haven Parkway on the Property Zone B2, Community Business District. The applicant has met all the conditions and on staff's recommendation for approval as is the Commission for the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Next item is Item Number 10, Woo Cow Sam Cape Henry Plaza LLC, conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor. Is the applicant or a representative here? They're not here, so I assume the conditions would have to be acceptable. We asked Ms. Quayor if she would read this one.
Yeah, this business is in District 8 and the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a tattoo parlor specifically for the application of permanent makeup, known as microblading. It's located within a beauty salon at the Cape Henry Plaza Shopping Center and given that there is no opposition and the applicant is agreeable to the conditions, staff and the Commission recommend it for the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Quayor. Next item is Number 11, is Joe White, Pembroke Square Associates LLC, alternative compliance. Is it representative? Yes, sir.
Yes, hi, I'm Joe White, representing Kohl's and the additional square footage of the Sephora logo and name to their signage. Just looking for additional square footage.
So are the conditions acceptable?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. I've asked Mr. Parks if he would read this one.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a wall signage larger than 60 square feet, maximum size permitted by the Central Business Core zoning regulations. There's an existing 160.1 square-foot wall sign on the facade. The applicant is requesting an additional 57.7 square-foot sign below the existing sign, which would total 217.8 square feet of wall signage. Section 2205 of the City's zoning ordinance allows for City Council to grant special exception to alternative compliance for signage that does not conform to the signage regulations of the Central Business Core Form Base Code. This additional signage will keep in the, with the branding for Sephora and Kohl's and with no opposition. CBC approval, the Planning Commission recommends and staff recommends this be on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, sir. Next item is Item Number 12, Ocean Chilling LLC, conditional use permit, short-term rental.
Good afternoon, Michelle Partridge Lane, representing Ocean Chilling LLC, short-term rental, conditional use permit, and all conditions are acceptable.
Thank you, ma'am. We've asked Ms. Quayor if she would fill in for Mr. Weiner since he retired as a short-term rental specialist.
We have quite a few applicants for short-term rentals. In review, we will... Sorry. We have quite a few short-term rentals today on the agenda. In review of the applications, we found that all of the applicants are in compliance with the zoning for a short-term rental at the oceanfront and there is no known opposition. So while we will read everyone, we won't read, well, we'll call up every applicant, but all of which are approved for recommendation on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Next item is Item Number 13, Michael Biondello, conditional use permit for short-term rentals also.
Good afternoon, my name is Marjorie Chapman. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and we accept your conditions.
Thank you, ma'am. Quayor.
This application is compliant for a short-term rental and the staff and Commission recommend it for approval.
Thank you. Next item, Number 14, it's ASXLM LLC, conditional use permit for short-term rental.
Eddie Bradon, representing ASXSM LLC. And while I'm up here, the next one, Prodan Management Group LLC, and the 18 recommended conditions in both cases are acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you, sir. Quayor, will you read the first one and then you can read the second one?
Thank you so much. Both applications, ASXSM, and the Prodan Management Group are in compliance for a short-term rental, recommended for consent from staff and the Commission. No, no opposition.
Thank you. And our last item on Consent Agenda, Item Number 16 and 17, Encavemus Properties, Inc., conditional use permit for a short-term rental. Ms. Quayor. Ms. Quayor?
Good afternoon, my name is Rachel Moneymaker. I am the property manager and I'm here on behalf of the applicant and all conditions are acceptable.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Quayor.
Thank you so much. Chemist Properties for a short-term rental is in compliance with their application. Staff is recommending it and the Commission for the Consent Agenda and there's no known opposition.
That concludes the Consent Agenda.
Yeah, read the numbers that are in consent, please.
All right, the item numbers on consent. Item Number 1, Number 3, Number 4, Number 5, Number 6, Number 7, Number 8, Number 9, Number 10, Number 11, Number 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve by consent as read by the Vice Chair?
So move.
Second, I do have four items to abstain from.
Call that up next. And we have a second by Mr. Plumlee, okay? And then any abstentions? And that would be Mr. Plumlee, go ahead.
I abstain from Items 4, 11, 14, and 15. I don't know if that means you need a second on those separate from mine. Okay, good. All right, thank you.
All right, so we have a second. Did you press? Good? On your monitor? To your left on your monitor, your screen, your computer screen. Yeah, there you go. It's okay, we'll get this.
Thank you, the vote is up.
Oh, sorry, hold. Can you take, Mr.? Can you take his verbal?
Yes, sir.
We'll move on.
Mr. Parks, can you vote either aye or nay on the Consent Agenda?
Yeah, just cast.
Oh, Mr. Clemmons, I'm sorry, aye or nay?
Aye.
And to clarify, Mr. Plumlee, you're abstaining from four items, 4, 11, 14, and 15? Okay.
That's correct.
By vote of seven to zero, Agenda Items 1, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, 16, and 17 have been recommended for approval by consent. By a vote of six in favor, zero against, with an abstention by Commissioner Plumlee, Agenda Items 4, 11, 14, and 15 have been recommended for approval by consent.
We good?
We're good.
All right, so now we'll move on to the next, the regular agenda, which we have one item. It's not, there's no opposition, but just for clarity, we want to go ahead and hear it, just so that the public can hear exactly what the Virginia Beach Development Authority is offering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our final agenda item is Agenda Item Number 2, City of Virginia Beach Development Authority. It's an application for a modification of proffers on parcels located between 2009 Hugh Dome Way to Tournament Drive and a parcel on the southeast corner of Princess Anne Road and Tournament Drive located in Council District 2.
Good afternoon, thank you, Commissioners and Members of the Commission. I'm Emily Archer with Economic Development, a project coordinator with the Office of Representing the Virginia Beach Development Authority for this application. I have a few slides, if you'll allow me to go through them to help explain that.
Please.
This is located off of Hugh Dome Way and Princess Anne Road in District 2. Existing conditions, it's mostly open farm field at the moment. We are requesting the modification of proffers, really to update the design guidelines for the business park. Everything in yellow that you see is owned by the Virginia Beach Development Authority and will be applied to this updated proffers and design guidelines. In January, there's two other owners within the Innovation Park, YCH LLC and Acoustical Sheet Metal, and they were both notified in January and asked if they would like to be party to this application. YCH LLC in red up on the screen, asked to be a co-applicant. Let's see, I'm here, but so everything except what is shown in orange will fall under these new proffers that we're requesting and the orange will remain under the old 2016 proffers. A little bit about the Innovation Park, it's 150-acre business park that was conveyed to the Virginia Beach Development Authority in 2016 by Council. It currently is governed by existing proffers and guidelines that were adopted in 2016. It is also highlighted for vision in the ITA Inter-Facility Traffic Area Plan in 2017. You can see that the vision was to incorporate regional trail network, that the wooded area be preserved, which is mostly wetlands, that the development be consistent with the design guidelines adopted at that time, and that the stormwater best management practices be employed. Many of those still remain, but what has changed is that the park was initially envisioned to house biomedical office buildings and we found that that biomedical ecosystem of Virginia Beach really needed to boost first. We have since opened a bioaccelerator at Bendix Road for small incubator kind of businesses to help build up that ecosystem within Virginia Beach that will hopefully lead to more larger developments that could still go within the Innovation Park. And then also within that time, the market has really shifted to more industrial sectors growing within our economy, while the focus still remains technology and manufacturing, supporting the field of scientific innovations. The density of the park has also changed based on the updated stormwater regulations for the city, requiring larger BMPs and more of them to accommodate the development that was envisioned there. So why this is really needed is to keep up with market, future and current market conditions within the city. As I mentioned, the existing design guidelines really designed for that medical office user and we're finding as more industrial users come in, it's, the guidance isn't in the document as needed to address those type of larger format industrial buildings to still achieve the aesthetic qualities of the park. Was always envisioned to achieve that higher level of aesthetics within the park, so update to the guidelines to help permit those types of buildings to come in and provide developers and staff guidance on how to get there with every applicant. The guidelines are broken into overall changes highlighted here, but also a building section and a site plan section. I'll briefly cover the changes in those sections. The change of the cover on the name from Virginia Beach Bio Park to the Innovation Park, of course. The whole document's been reformatted with updated photos of Princess Anne Commons and context of the park. And it's more user-friendly and easier to kind of find the information you need, as well as there is another end section that talks all about the approval process with VBDA for guidance on what steps the applicant will be asked to follow. In the Site Design section, there's been a lot of editing of the landscape and planting requirements. There's an existing typewritten section under the existing appendix guidelines that have been incorporated into the text and edited for clarity and redundancy with our zoning landscape ordinance. There are still requirements for landscaping and plantings well above and beyond the landscape ordinance, such as enhanced entry drives, as you see on the screen, irrigation around all planting beds and sod rather than seed for grass areas. There's a new fencing section that talks about if fencing's required for security. It should only be in the rear side of the property and coupled with planting and decorative and sustainable in nature. Outdoor amenity spaces are encouraged in the new document and there's a new signage section that addresses signage requirements, again, above and beyond what's in the signage ordinance for the city. In the Building Design category, as mentioning, there's more examples and guidance for advanced manufacturing and light industrial facilities, including a wider material palette. manufacturing and light industrial facilities, including a wider material palette, more guidance provided for outdoor staging and storage, provided that if they are employing those uses, that they're in the rear of the property and screened year-round with walls and landscape material. There's an existing parking structure section in the existing design guidelines that we felt the park would never really achieve that level of density to require parking structure, and that has been removed. And then, you can see a bit about our schedule, signs are posted around the park. It's been to be the Development Authority as well as the ITA Committee last week, here today, and hopefully, City Council in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Archer, for doing that. Thank you. Is there any questions for Ms. Archer? Okay, go ahead.
I don't really have any questions. I just got a couple of comments that, you know, after being, seeing, hearing your presentation this morning, and understanding that the, what we had established years ago is a biomedical park isn't, wouldn't come into fruition, and we've tried to do some type of industrial there, I think that's probably a wise decision. And the main thing that we want to concur with, and I think we do, is that it has to be done in a very tasteful manner, because this is on the gateway to coming into the city hall, and we want to make sure it's done in a very tasteful and lovely manner that people would, if they come to visit our city, so. And I think according to the information you provided us this morning, it seems like that's headed in that direction, so. So I have no problem with changing to Innovation Park. I don't, I don't think that's, I think that's probably a very good move, so I would support the application.
All right, thank you, Mr. Horsley. Is there any other comments or questions? None? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Here, having said what I did before, I'll make a motion that we approve the application.
I'll second.
Second by, is that Plumley? Okay, thank you.
Vote is open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clemmons, can I get your verbal vote, aye or nay?
Aye.
Thank you. I reported a vote of seven in favor, zero against. Agenda item number two has been recommended for approval.
All right, thank you. So that concludes our March 8 planning commission hearing. Thank you, we adjourn.